At the outset of this meeting, I would just like to set some parameters before we move on with a certified closed session. For the listening and the viewing public, you can see that this meeting looks very different than is typical. This is a brief meeting. Because of COVID and because of social distancing and because of directives from our governor, we are meeting to do just essential business, which is primarily the budget, to pass the budget, to send it along to our funding partners. And just want to recognize that our staff and board members have spent a lot of time planning this budget. That process started in January, and in January, we had no idea that we would be here today. So much has changed very quickly. And so, just want to share with the public and our funding partners that we recognize that things are uncertain and things may change. So just want to make that clear. We do not have public speakers on this agenda, but for those who are watching us and would like to weigh in and share their thoughts, certainly you can email me or any other board member comments or questions, and we will gladly get back to you. So I'm moving on to item 2.2. Is there a motion to allow Dr. Beers, Ms. Hummel, and Sandy Young to electronically?
Madam Chair, I move that Dr. James Beers, Ms. Julie Hummel, and Mrs. Sandra Young be allowed to participate in the special call meeting via electronic communication due to being quarantined for exposure to the coronavirus in their homes where they are calling from.
Second.
Thank you. Second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young. Dr. Beers.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving on to item 2.3, is there a motion to certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I certify that as to best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting or heard, discussed, or considered.
Second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Mrs. Young. Dr. Beers. Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving on to item 3.1, Ms. Serza, would you please take the role?
Dr. Beers. Ms. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Dowell.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mrs. Young. Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young. Dr. Beers. Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel. Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving on to item 3.3, update on coronavirus. Dr. Heron.
Good evening, Madam Chair and School Board members. As you are aware, Governor Northam just yesterday announced the closure of all Virginia schools for the rest of this year. Very briefly this evening, I want to highlight what we are doing as a school division and where families may find resources during this time. All of this information is on the school division webpage at wjccschools.org under the banner COVID-19 Coronavirus. On the webpage, you will find the learning packets provided for students on March 13th. We will be communicating this Friday regarding some additional resources for the weeks prior to spring break. We have started to gather a series of instructional videos provided by our incredible teachers to support learning. You will also find counseling resources for families. On the website page, you will also find a list of community resources for families. Also there, you will find information on our meal program for students. We provide breakfast and lunch for students at four sites, and so far, we have served 3,464 meals to 928 students. We are distributing at designated sites because free transportation has been provided by water to each of the sites. Secondly, we can replenish the food if it runs out right at the site. Thirdly, we can keep food cold. And fourthly, it aligns with VDOE guidelines. And perhaps most important of all, we can manage the 10 people, six-foot rule that limits the exposure of our staff. What are next steps? Again, we will communicate this Friday information regarding the week prior to spring break, and we are working diligently on a plan to continue teaching and learning virtually after spring break via VIEW, the WJCC electronic classroom. This is an unprecedented time for us all, but I want everyone to know we are in this together, and we will make it work. Our students will continue to learn, and we will make sure there is a plan to fill any gaps in student learning. For now, stay home and stay safe. Thank you, Madam Chair. This completes my brief COVID-19 update this evening. And again, I encourage everyone to keep visiting the website often for updates.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. With that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. I'll read each of these items. Item 4.1, approved minutes from February 18, 2020, and March 3, 2020 meetings.
Madam Chair, I actually had some questions about the update. Yeah, and I wonder if other board members did too.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah. So, Dr. Heron, one of the things that I've been hearing from a lot of community members out near me are, how can people help? They want to help staff, they want to help students. I think, if I understood correctly from your remarks, that there are resources available on the website, and if people want to volunteer or contribute, they should look at those resources and maybe work with those agencies. Would you, could you speak to that, please?
Yeah, that would be the best plan for now. We do have all the help we need at our sites for feeding students right now. We have it well managed with staff, and we're also very aware of the social distancing that we want to maintain for families who are receiving food and for our staff. So yes, please, go to the website, look at all the agencies there, and offer your support wherever you can.
Thank you. And I'd like to also echo something that Supervisor Mark Glennon said at their James City County Board of Supervisors meeting, that is, one of the best ways you can help is to stay home and social distance, and that's really critically important. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there additional questions for Dr. Heron concerning the COVID update?
I'm not sure if I've got direct questions yet on COVID. I just want to express my appreciation for Dr. Heron's leadership, for Chair Ombi's leadership. This is, as they say, unprecedented time in our community for everybody, and so I appreciate your leadership. I appreciate the long nights that you've had to endure, all the answers that you're providing on the spot, and for you as well, Chair. I know you're getting a ton of questions that you can't answer directly on the spot, and so I appreciate your fluid nature with respect to this unprecedented, as they say, event. I suppose maybe I do have a question concerning the virtual learning after spring break. We know that there are a portion of our community that don't have direct access to the internet, and I know you're taking that into account. Can you speak on that and what that might look like for those families?
Absolutely. For those families who don't have a laptop, we've had staff in all of this week, and they've already prepared about 200 laptops and are continuing to work on high school laptops to distribute them to the community. We are actually going to use our platform VIEW as one of our main communication tools because a lot of parents are getting teachers in different ways via email and other ways, and it's becoming overwhelming, so we're going to use one platform for communication. And we're actually phoning families, anyone who doesn't currently have a VIEW access point. We're trying to get everyone into VIEW so we can all communicate in the same way. We are planning and looking at what that's going to look like for teachers and for students, and by the end of this week, we'll give information about the week before spring break, and then before spring break, we'll be in a position to announce our plan for the rest of the semester. Lot of work going on. It's the first time we've had to do this, and as I've said to staff, it won't be perfect.
Right.
But we will continue with teaching and learning, and one of the most exciting things about it is we're not teaching to a test, we're teaching for students to learn in a way that they can enjoy learning.
Appreciate you answering that because one of the questions I get in the comments that I'm hearing is that, well, every student, and especially our high schoolers, every high schooler has a cellphone, and that's just not the case. And I appreciate that you recognize that, you understand that, and you've got a plan to address that and keep our students learning. So thank you.
We also, you did mention about Wi-Fi and access. We do have a list of resources, free resources, and the hotspot on your phone is one of those key ways to access the internet, but we're also hoping to purchase a number of MiFi's for those who don't have access, even from a teacher perspective, if they don't have direct access, so that they can deliver instruction via VIEW. So we're looking at lots of different things, and people are working in different directions to create a plan that we weren't expecting to have to create just so soon. But we will make it happen, and we will make it work.
Dr. Heron, are there additional comments or questions for Dr. Heron? Sandy? Dr. Beers?
Yeah, we have been using, for all of our planning so far, the Zoom platform, and teachers certainly would be able to use that. We also, on a high school level, we've accessed to Virtual Virginia courses, we've accessed to WHRO courses, we have courses already in our own learning management system Canvas, so we have several means to be able to do that. We can attach videos to the VIEW platform, and so we'll be able to create teaching videos for students to watch, and then they'll be able to communicate with their teacher through VIEW as well. However, we have created a way for our registrars, they've been given a laptop at home, so they were able to produce transcripts for students who were in the positions to apply for college. Plus, we got some lengthy guidance from VDOE just today about seniors in particular, and we're working through that right now to see how to implement some of that within our system. But the objective of everyone is that every student that's on course already for graduation will graduate on time, and will be able to move on to the next level. Yes, sir, we're aware of the courses, we're very excited. We actually use a lot of WHRO courses already, and some of them we actually refine and put
Mrs. Young, Ms. Hummel, do you have additional comments?
Up to this point, our staff have not been required to produce anything for students because it was a two-week shutdown by the Governor for a short period of time, but we did create lots of learning activities for students to continue with. Moving forward, we're in the process of creating what a teacher day will look like, what an administrator day will look like, making sure that if a family has students at every level, that we're trying to take that into consideration. So our faculty moving forward, and they've already started to do it because they're incredible, they're going to be creating some lessons together, and C and I are already actively working on some of those. They're going to be teaching part of the day, there'll be time built in for planning. We just don't know exactly what it'll look like, but within the next week, we will have
Thank you, Julie. Mr. Dowell. Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Dowell.
I don't have anything further. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with additional comments, questions?
I'm trying to get back to my house, so again, I want to make this a short meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. With that, then, moving on to the consent agenda, I will read through each of these before there's a motion. Item 4.1, approved minutes from February 18 and March 3, 2020 meetings. Item 4.2, financial report, monthly bills and payroll for February 2020. Item 4.3, personnel action. Item 4.4, Resolution R-7-20, Month of the Military Child. Item 4.5, Resolution R-8-20, V.S.B.A. Business Honor Roll. Item 4.6, Resolution R-9-20, Disability Awareness Month. Item 4.7, Resolution R-14-20, School Volunteer Week. Item 4.8, Resolution R-16-20, Equity and Education Month. Item 4.9, Revised Policy AFA, Evaluation of School Board Operational Procedures. Item 4.10, Revised and Recode Policy IND to IE, Moment of Silence. Item 4.11, Review Policy JFCF, Alcohol and Drugs. Item 4.12, Revised Policy KJ, Advertising in the Schools. And lastly, item 4.13, Revised Policy KQ, Commercial, Promotional, and Corporate Sponsorships and Partnerships. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young. Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Thank you. Moving on to action items, 5.1, the FY '21 Operating Budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we ask for your consideration of the fiscal year '21 operating budget. The information on the agenda item in front of you is the board amended budget following my original superintendent's budget.
Okay, and so before we ask questions or begin a discussion, Ms. Cook and Mr. Kelly have their statement to read about the budget.
Go first, I always go first.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Thank you, Madam Chair. As a member of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the fiscal year 2021 school budget because I'm an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Madam Chair, as a member of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the fiscal year 2021 school budget because my wife is an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe that I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest.
Thank you. This is Dr. Heron.
Madam Chair, I just want to provide some information for the board that I provided earlier in writing today because some members wouldn't be present this evening physically. Basically, what you have is the budget as was presented with the board amendments, which change the original 3% raise for staff to 4% and also add an increase for substitute teachers in our classrooms. Also, you have a new budget based on the General Assembly's budget, which actually brought more money from the state level to our budget and reduces the amount the locality would have to pay to fund the budget.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Questions, comments, or feedback for Dr. Heron?
So are we, are you looking for a mo-
Yes.
We are looking for a motion, so put a, yes.
I can move, and then we can debate-
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
So I move that the School Board adopt Option 2, which is a 3% salary increase with a subteacher pay increase of $10 per day as the school board's budget. That what you're looking for?
Or should we move to adopt what Dr. Heron amended and then discuss it?
I just-
I just made a motion.
I made a motion to the 3% raise and then the-
And that included the-
The subpay.
A pay, okay.
3% and a subpay.
Okay. Which one, that's this one?
Option 2, right.
It's the superintendent's budget with the subpay increase.
I would call it-
Superintendent's of proposed budget. And then Option 1 from the School Board is the 4%, and then Option 2, 3%.
Okay, I'm with you, okay.
This one?
Yes.
Last one.
On the telephone, it's this one.
Sorry.
Point to the camera.
So Julie seconded, so do we have, do we have two seconds? No, we have a second.
Did you do, so 148, 185, 1835? That what you-
That's right.
Yes.
Yes.
So do you want to make that motion, Mr. Kelly?
I will continue with it, say the total of all funds be $160 million, $41,000. Julie seconded.
So, there's a second?
And now we are open for discussion.
Discussion. Start, Mr. Kelly.
I just believe that the 3% salary increase originally in the superintendent's proposal, based upon where we are right now and the potential for impacts to revenue, that going forward, going forward with that is the appropriate number versus the additional 4%. Because I think we have to get to 5% over two years anyway.
I believe that's changed and it's 2% each year.
4%. Yeah. It is the minimum that we can do. I just think in the, as a result of the potential impact of revenues, that that's the prudent and conservative course of investing from the funding bodies.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
Cook.
Initiate.
Thank you, Dr. Beers.
Do we have any information on what other school divisions are doing, or is everything so in flux that it's-
I think everything is in a state of flux, but generally, what I've heard from other localities, that they're giving between 2% and 3%, so we would not be out of line with a 3% raise. Most are sitting about that. If we do go, if we vote on the 3% raise and the subincrease of note, our ask of the localities will be 1.5% increase as opposed to a 2.6, and that would be 1.4 million as opposed to 2.2, which it originally was.
And 1.5 is significantly below what we typically ask for and receive, is that correct on an average?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
I also think it's important for us to acknowledge that the world is in flux, and so we may have to amend this completely after the, particularly the county figures out what finances are going to look like in the next fiscal year based upon sales, revenues, and sales taxes, and tourism that may or may not happen, and when we all come back to normal. So that's, I mean, I think we have to, we are coming to approve something by the 1st of April. This is the thing we should, I think that, I feel that we should forward to the funding partner, funding bodies, but also realize that everything is in play.
And to that point, Mr. Kelly, just so the listening public understands, the reason we are approving this is because we're required to-
By the 1st of April, right.
By the 1st of April, by state code. Ms. Young, did you have additional feedback? Mr. Dowell.
Yeah, I support the Option 2, the 3%. As Ms. Young pointed out reluctantly, though, I think most all of us, all of us were really excited about offering that 4%, putting that 4% on the table, and pitching that to our funding partners, and really, you know, highlighting all the good that our teachers do despite the challenges in pay, and to give them that shot in the arm, our teachers. And we see that even today, they're Skyping, they're Facebook chatting with their students, they're driving by their houses and encouraging their students. It's very warm-hearted, to say the least, but they're very active, and they're active throughout the year, not just throughout the academic year, so. But I think they also will get that we're all in this together, and that revenue stream is going to make a big difference to our funding partners, so, yeah.
And I will agree with Mr. Dowell that our teachers right now are proving that they're deserving of at least a 4%, and I get that, and I just, it's just, I think the reality is where we are today.
Additional comments?
I would just like to say that I concur with all of my colleagues and always wish that we could pay our teachers and staff more, because like my colleagues have said, each and every one of our employees goes above and beyond, and they make our division what it is.
Yeah, so, yeah, I also support Mr. Kelly's motion, and, you know, as much as I'd like to gain ground on teacher pay, probably this is not the year to do it, given the reliance on tourism revenue that our community has. But we are compelled to present a budget of need, and this, I think, is a well justified one, and- one and even in these, in certain times. But I did want to talk a little bit about advocacy and just, you know, just to say that when we pass this request, it's our job to work to advocate for it. And to that end, I presume Ms. Zombi will be sending a letter to funding partners outlining our discussion, but I also will be working with her and Dr. Heron to communicate with the Education Association and the PNC to ask them to contact our local elected officials to ask them to support this. So just wanted you to be aware of that. And anyone, anyone in the listening public who feels strongly about supporting public education, particularly when our funding partners are going to have some really difficult decisions to make, I would encourage you to be in touch because that matters.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Cook, and thank you for speaking. So we have a motion on the floor. Not hearing any additional comments. Ms. Serza?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers? Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Zombi?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to item 5.2, approve resolution R-13-20, open accounts at Town Bank. This was discussed at the last meeting by Ms. Ewing.
Madam Chair, move we approve resolution R-13-20, open accounts at Town Bank.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Young? Dr. Beers? Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Zombi?
Aye.
Moving on to item 5.3, transfer of funds. This is presented today and we'll vote on it today. I earlier today emailed folks information about the necessity for us to give the superintendent flexibility to move monies from line items, particularly as she's ramping up online learning. And so she does not need the board to vote on purchases of up to $100,000, so this would not be more than that, but she does need the board to approve and vote on transfers. So we would like to have limited authority to do that.
Madam Chair, I move that the superintendent be given temporary authority to authorize fund transfers between categories to allow for any necessary expenditures to continue the efficient operation of the school division through the balance of the fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Dowell, is there any discussion?
Just wanted to point out, I added through the balance of the fiscal year, so it's a temporary measure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. So the, just in general, I realize that you'll inform the board, which is by extension informing the public, but the primary purpose of this is for, to meet the educational needs of the students, given that they're not in school. Is that correct?
Correct. For example, just this week, we are hoping to, with the authority by MFI's, purchase insurance for every laptop that's going out that doesn't currently have it. Those are just two things in the works right now and several others coming behind, but it's that kind of thing, that there is money in some areas, but it's not in the technology line item where these purchases are normally bought. So we have to move money into that line item to, into that area of the budget to be able to spend it.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Dr. Beers, Ms. Young, Ms. Hummel? Hearing none. Do you have, do you have additional questions or discussion regarding? Okay, so are, I, hearing, hearing none, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young? Dr. Beers? Ms. Zombi?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to item 4.04, suspending policy BD. And so I also gave information today about that as well, and I think Shannon has given us information, but we need, in order for us to condense our meeting schedule for the foreseeable future, the April, instead of meeting twice a month, we'll meet once a month in light of COVID. So we will temporarily suspend our meeting schedule. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we temporarily suspend our meeting schedule and I don't see that, is it item or policy BD? Through April, is that what you said?
I think it's, I think through the end of the academic year.
Through the end of the academic year.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Kelly? Any discussion? Dr. Beers, Ms. Young, Ms. Hummel?
We can, but, so this doesn't prevent us from having to, we can't.
It just allows us to consolidate if we feel that's the need to, yeah. So.
As a point of clarity, that will mean we will discuss items and then bring them to action in the same meeting, which we don't generally do, but I will try to make you aware of what's coming down the road so that you're aware of what we're asking for in terms of operations projects and things like that.
And then just to clarify too, Ms. Serza, is, do- Dr. Beers?
The notice to the public doesn't change? I'm not sure he's talking nice. He's not talking nice.
I think the board clerk can respond to that?
Sorry.
Notice to the public won't change?
No.
Thank you. Trying to keep it moving.
And then, so just to make it, make it clear, is, with regard to the calendar, can we mute him? Our meeting calendar, we-
If the people who are on the phone don't want to be heard, they might want to hit mute. Oh, sorry.
And just want to make it clear, so we do have a board meeting calendar that's set forth. We don't need an additional motion. Suspend this policy addresses that?
I believe it does.
So we have a sec, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any additional discussion to suspend this temporarily so that we can conduct business? Hearing no-
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Hearing no additional comments, Ms. Serza?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young? Dr. Beers? Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel? Ms. Zombi?
Aye. Okay, so. Moving on to item, item 6.1. So that, so for April, our next meeting will be at the end of the month instead of having two at the beginning and the end, so our next meeting is planned for the 21st here in the annex. Unless there are additional comments or information. Okay, Ms. Young?
Dr. Heron?
I believe Ms. Berjouar is reaching out to the SEAC committee to try to hold a meeting on Zoom so that they can approve their special education plan, and I'm sure the CTE committee will try to do the same because of the Carl Perkins grant coming up as well.
And I assume the SEAC-
It will be a virtual meeting on Zoom.
So staff will reach, staff will reach out to you because those committees still need to submit their annual reports and those kinds of things. Additional comments?
I will certainly have Dr. Murphy reach out to you. I'll talk to the board chair first and look for her direction on that and then we'll reach, reach out to the policy committee following that.
Thank you. So just along those lines, I think I was thinking about this and discussed it with a couple of board members, but typically, the spring is when we have our board retreat, but I think given where we're at today, I don't foresee us having a board retreat and I'm sorry mainly for Mr. Dowell because you haven't had an opportunity to do that, but unless things change quickly, I had begun looking and researching topics, but I just, so I just want to let folks know I haven't forgotten that. I just don't foresee us doing that this year. Cook?
Madam Chair, the conversation about our, changing our meeting schedule and then SEAC and the CTE committee and policy committee, so, you know, work has to go on during this crisis, but I'm assuming that with the reduced schedule that really we're only pulling things through that are required for us to do business and continue operating as a going concern as opposed to?
Absolutely. We're going to try to keep the business to essential business, even if that means suspending our policy review for a period of time and then pushing it later because there, there's no timeline on policies and sometimes they take considerable, considerable discussion of the board. So to keep our meetings brief for safety of everyone involved, I would recommend we suspend that process.
Basically, suspend everything that's not essential to operating.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I should have asked that earlier, I apologize.
Yes. Thank you for asking and clarifying. And then before we end, I just want to share one thing that I wish I could have shared before COVID. It is Disabilities Awareness Month and I was so proud that Berkeley Middle School had planned to have a sensory-friendly play. Their play Frozen was supposed to debut, I guess, three weeks ago now. Anyway, so that was a perfect example of celebrating diversity and meeting, meeting the needs of folks with disabilities and so it's too bad that that didn't happen, but that was a great example of educating people about disabilities. And so I thank our Berkeley staff for, for doing that. So if there's no further comments, thank you, everyone, for attending virtually and personally, and this meeting is adjourned.